Well, I can do that here, right?
Yeah. Martin's still in the head.
I'd love to do it. I told him he was too bright and too.
They're probably not good.
They do, but they're probably close. Close to.
People say that. I'm not going to put it now. I haven't done it since.
What did you want, is that God have us each night? You said forty-five. It is.
This guy.
The rush on. Yeah. Takes it forward. So that takes it up.
What's all this? Oh, why is it? That's my favorite. Still an opening.
Yeah. Okay, if you'll join me in the pledge, please. All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, to this special council meeting. If you've not signed in and wish to do so, now would be a good time to do that. And I see we're all present except for Eric. Cher is beyond. She's not over there.
Oh, she's coming.
She's coming. She's sorry. All right.
Let me, Mike, there isn't a public forum built into this tonight, right? This is for the purpose of, okay, I'm talking about the public forum of the future.
Okay. Okay. At this point, we're gonna go to, item four, which is hiring a negotiator for the mini contract.
Okay.
Who wants to forward?
I'll take the floor on that. And I'm, I'm, this is, as you say, a special meeting. The purpose is towards to approve a contract for a labor negotiator that will work with council to you. And we wanna pick good people, work well together, and at a price that is, you know, that is as much as the city can. But as little price as we can. We wanna work best with that. We know there's a comment that, that in this process, there's some comments made. I fully support the city having a union. I do, I think, has every, every right they should have. No question. I worked at the county and they had a lot of unions, had no problem. Even the team. And, and, but then, on the other hand, the city has the obligation to hire appropriate negotiators and council to deal with, so they can deal with these complicated issues. Unions are becoming exceedingly complicated. I mean, in negotiation with labor unions, all of that is complicated. I saw it in the county and I saw it in other cities. So, saying all that, yeah, I have, I'm gonna discuss two positions, two candidates. Shelley will talk about another and move forward. The first one is Tony Menke. There is some tabletop material there. Tony Menke is an attorney, he's out of Yakima. He has worked with, for decades, worked with Council Two Union. And he's able to start quickly. His rate is $250 an hour. He, which is, from a legal standpoint, low. I've had, it's three fifty, four hundred, it's been more than standard. And he seems very competent, he's been in a long time, he's a senior partner. And easy to talk to. I'd say he can get going. And his plan is, he will, he can also use the internet for meetings, as well as up close and personal meetings, which he does both. So, I was impressed by him, he's very good. The second candidate is Stephen Schubach in Portland, and very confident. The county issues he was given in the past, Johnny H. He was, he was up to speed, but he is swamped with contracts right now. And it's gonna be tough to wedge it in. He's got, he's working on twenty-five contracts right now. And, by the way, Tony Menke said he had cut back his, now he's trying to concentrate on small towns. He had his unions as big as eight, a thousand plus. So, anyway, for Stephen, he was very good. He, he did not know anything about the Council Two Union, which isn't rare, but he did not know about it. And he charges, they charge three fifty, four hundred an hour. And the, so I, I was impressed by both. But the, I think I was more comfortable for TECO with the first candidate. Now, Shelley, you wanna discuss, mention your third candidate.
Well, I did, I did talk to Heidi Greenwood. She is with Austin, Murphy, and Wallace. They are out of Seattle and have an office in Manachee. And how it came about her was through Oscar Ray, who some of you may know. And remember his name, he worked with MRSC for a number of years. And he left MRSC about two years ago to go to a private practice that specializes in working with municipalities. So, he steered me towards Heidi. Heidi, she has a lot of experience with the cities, municipalities. I think one of the cities that she doesn't have, but her firm has, is George, Washington, like over, you know, by Owensburg area, or between Moses Lake and Ellensburg. And she kinda steered us towards first working with a professional negotiator. But there are things that she and her firm, maybe down the road, that could be useful to us with her experiences. Her fees are also $350 an hour, four hundred for specialty things. So, I just got the email with her specifics tonight. I did talk to her last week, but I didn't get it till like twenty minutes before I came here. So, apologies if I don't have it in paper for you. But I didn't really feel that she would be one of our top contenders, you know, based on kind of her advice to work with a negotiator.
Pete, question for you.
Yes.
And maybe for you, Shelley. When these folks have to come here physically, do we pay the same rate for travel money as they charge normally?
Most of them travel. I haven't asked, I haven't asked Tony that. Most of them charge half as much when they travel.
That would be a question that I would like to know, because he's coming from Yakima, that's four to five hours. If she's coming, or she's coming from Watshe, that's about three. And the one from Portland's about five or six. And if we're paying the full rate for them to travel, that gets expensive.
The standard is, I know, I know Portland, I, possibly both. I mean, they do charge, but the standard is half, the charge half the rate. And maybe a little less depending. That's why I said, many of them do Zoom, or they, and their meetings can be, their meetings are face-to-face meetings, they occur, but they don't have to be as often as, say, ten years ago, or that's what we had.
So, Pete, in this from Tony, he does say, travel time is billed at the hourly rate, and billings are based on a one quarter hour minimum. So, I think overall, the cannot calculate, I think we are, we are talking about, with Tony, probably about $10,000 dollars total with the number of hours. I believe he said, the other gentleman said even more, like thirty hours. We're talking considerably more with him.
Yeah.
And because of Tony's experience with Council Two and specializing in this area, it seemed like Pete had the idea that he would give us the more minimum number of hours, he would take less time, because he knows his way around this.
I think exactly. I think a gentleman from Portland, he did, he talked about thirty to forty hours at that rate. Fifty to twenty thousand, I thought that was minimum. They both said, if the process is, is cordial and productive and not confrontative, the costs are quite down, are low. If there's a hangup and there's problems and you can't work it out, then costs go up. And so, we would like to avoid that. And so, we would like to do that. And so, my, the, and the discussion was, I think, ten thousand, that would be a preliminary amount, depending on what you're talking about. As if everybody agrees, if it's standard operating negotiation, that'd probably be reasonable for us and the location. But, so that's what we're talking about. Ten thousand dollars. We could go, go higher, but I think ten would probably do it. Can't guarantee that. My, after looking at all this, I'm recommending two things. One, that we take Tony Menke from Yakima, it seemed like the best fit for TECO. And he's at a reasonable price of two. You call it two fifty an hour, reasonable, but it is. He's at, this day and age. And then, we can, we can, that's the acceptable, I mean, vote on the second one, the ten thousand dollar rate for a budget ten thousand dollars to this negotiation.
Can that be one motion, or does it have to be two?
Probably should be one, probably should be two motions at this point.
Well, I'd like to motion.
He'll do, he'll do, instead of traveling a lot, he'll do things on Zoom.
As much as possible.
So, that, that's a big benefit there.
Less, less distance to come than the other guy.
Where, where's the union they have?
The, where he has to come from the union?
That was even.
Well, I, the one I was aware of, the union representative, I thought was Spokane.
He's cheating.
Cheating, that's right, I said cheating. I was calling cheating Spokane. But that's not fair. So, my question, so do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we hired Tony, with, I'm sorry, he is pulling.
Menke?
Menke, Menke Jackson and buyer to the negotiator. Hey, Sophia.
It's been moved in second, any discussion at this point?
Yeah, discussion, I would have, on where the money's coming from in our budget.
Problem.
Well, the same place it would be to meet some of the demands that are in that.
I, I'm just curious, I was thinking where it's gonna come from.
Well, you've reminded me several times that we have the bond, two hundred and fifty thousand that we had to take it out of there. We also, I believe, have some lead right in our budget for emergency suits and things. So, as much as I really hate to do this, I agree with Pete that I wanna do it right. It's, it's not about stopping the union, that's, that's here, but it's here with us, you know, forever. And I would like to do it right.
Anybody I've talked to, not anybody, but any cities that have a drag state, they indicate that the prudent thing to do is have a, a labor negotiator to look after, make sure the process goes the right way. And that's fair on both sides. Both sides have attorneys negotiating, more than likely. So, that's only fair, that's fair on both sides. And I think it, I hope the process goes well.
Archie, have you checked in on anything you wanna say?
Well, I, you know, I hate the thought that we have to spend money. But I feel like, you know, this is happening now. And whatever's decided, you know, from this is gonna affect years after. We've got, you know, so this is a one-hit thing right here. To get, try to do as good as we can to get a settlement for our citizens. And, you know, I feel like it wasn't our deal anyway, but we're kinda put in a corner. And if we really wanna represent fairly everyone in our town, this is probably the way we have to go. I hate it, but to say it wasn't really something we had anything to say about it.
Both sides wanna do, do a job, it's kind of their job, and I don't think it's how you do it anymore. That's how it is. Nothing's ever, there's no handshakes anymore.
I had a ballpark figure in my head before the meeting about what was too much. Where, where would I have drawn the line at what was effective and what wasn't? If I was sitting in your seats.
Sure.
And I came up with five grand. I thought anything over that would have been, would have overkill.
Oh, in the first place, you, you're kind of the reason why we're here. You're the one why we're here with the union. You're the one that negotiated the first contract. That's why we're here, right? You negotiated the first contract. And for those that laughing, you don't.
You're the reason we're here.
Oh, my God!
I think that is.
Are you gonna pull, I, I think it's very clear, are you gonna pull this?
Yep.
I, I think there was some great efforts on all parts. Sometimes, like I said, it's complicated. It looks simple, but it's not. And my effort was done, appreciated, but that's just how it is. And so now, that's why we're, we're here, to get trained labor negotiators to do the job for both sides. And they're gonna, they're gonna have the same thing.
Okay. So, at this point, we have a motion on the floor to accept Mr. Menke from the.
But, but, you, you asked Marge, can we ask each council member if they want to put it on? You asked Marge.
I asked Karen, too.
Oh, did you, oh, I didn't hear you were asking.
I was gearing, yes.
Oh, okay.
E-voice. Anybody else have any?
Well, I do, and I go along with Marge, that, you know, we have an obligation to the citizens of TECO that this is all brand new. And then, and all of that is if we leave or whatever, if we have it fixed now, and it's running in a direction that everybody's happy with, then the future council members, leadership of the town, they're going, they can do a better job at it, instead of just all thrown in pieces. So, I think that if it gets done now, it's gonna be more expensive. And, but I think that that's just, we have to bite the bullet and get it done correctly, so there's no lawsuits. So, that's my opinion. I think that we're doing the best we possibly can. I'm sorry if people, there's people out there that don't like it. But this is a legal matter, and you have to have some kind of representation. That's, we're not all worse.
Okay. Mike? You got it? Cher?
I have a lot to say. I really do. You, you that were laughing, you don't know half of what's going on. You're hearing bits and pieces of gossip, and it's gotta stop. Oh, yes, Steve, oh, yes.
You don't know what happened.
I know this, this means a little.
What?
I know this means a little, it hasn't been twenty-four hours since you called the special meeting.
Called it non-private.
I think, I think we should probably, do you have another comment?
Oh, no, 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 it said that, that, this is, as we all said, that's, that's where we are. And it is complicated. I wish it went this way. The idea of settling things simply with a handshake, and really, it's too complicated to do that. And when somebody works at it, and it looks good, and it seems like it makes, makes sense, unless you're experienced in it, it gets really complicated. So, that's my own comment.
So, I, I just have a question. If we didn't hire anyone, how are we gonna solve this?
Well, the normal procedure would be, after the initial presentation, if the council had something that was, that needed to be addressed, that you wanted to address, you would come back to negotiator, which was, at that point, me.
Right.
Okay? And, 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 or somebody on the council.
Right.
Okay? Dave could take over that spot if he so chooses. Okay? And then, you get together with the union negotiator and propose, just like the conversation we had when we were negotiating. Okay? When he made the original proposals, I said, okay, stop. Okay, we're, this isn't, this isn't coming up. We're not gonna get this by. This is, we've gotta chomp this down, we've gotta stretch this out, or whatever we decided. So, that's how that was, in it. For instance, when we talked about the COLA increase initially, they originally came up with, I believe it was fifteen percent over three years. And I says, no, no way, we're not gonna do that. We might go ten over three years, and we'll stay, or this way. He was gonna go five, five, and five. Part of that was to catch up for the lack of any COLA increases for the last year or two. So, so that's normally how the negotiations take place. You just don't, I mean, and so when he, when the proposal was presented, there, of course, there's always a chance that it gets accepted. Okay? And, and it was all negotiated with the idea that this is a fair compensation, and that we should accept it. Okay?
And, and.
And when we didn't, when we didn't even vote on it, and then that kinda kicks it back into the city's court to say, okay, what part of this doesn't fit? What part of this doesn't work? Is it, is it a total monetary issue? Is it, is it this? Is it time off? Is it pay time off? Is it vacation? Is it the health insurance? What part of that didn't jive? And so, then, that's when the city should come back and say, this is what we wanna do. I was wanting to step out of the middle, because I, I realized that majority of the council doesn't trust me. Okay? I realize this. And part of that is because I, I believe we have great staff who deserve to be compensated. And so, when, when we negotiated this, that was all, that was all part of the conversation that happened. Okay?
And, and so, the contract that you negotiated with, and you feel very comfortable with that.
Yes.
You feel very comfortable.
And I, cause I, I talked to, you know, and this is where it gets greasy, is because normally, the people who negotiate for the city in this are either business manager or the humans resource group people. Okay? They are not union people. Neither am I, I'm a like the official. Normally, and, and like I say, I was told, I'm in a tough spot being the mayor during the negotiating. Okay? And I was told to get out of it, but at that point, the process was moving, seemed to be fairly fluid, seemed to be fairly calm at that point. So, there, I just says, okay, let's walk this through, the first presentation, see how it goes, and we'll go from there. And at that point, when you guys decided that you needed help, when you needed advice, then I was, I, at that point, I was going to step out of the middle on that and let one of you guys be the negotiator.
Seems a little more complicated than that. What happened is, we did look at that contract. It seemed more complicated than, or a lot of questions.
There's a lot there, isn't there?
Yeah, a lot. A lot of questions. And people didn't know what was standard, what wasn't standard. What was, what was this, or what was that? People didn't, we didn't know. And so, and so then, I checked with negotiators. Asked them, they said, wherever you pick, don't make any decisions until that person's on board. Because you have all these questions, and you're, you're not probably be happy, no matter what comes out, every, nobody, nobody's entirely happy, union or city. But, I said, we had a lot of questions. We didn't have, we didn't have a lot of answers. We weren't sure what the answer should be. And then Marge checked with negotiators, and said, all these. They said, whoever you get, it's complicated more than you think. Give a negotiator, but don't make any decisions. And we haven't. The council made no decision. We didn't, we didn't reject the contract, we didn't do anything. We looked at it, said we need some more advice, like you said. And we decided, as you, as you voted, we needed, we needed a labor negotiator that would represent the city and the citizens. And, and then we'd work with the union better, like this. Tony, he's worked with Council Two for decades. He knows about it, he's comfortable. He can, I'm hoping seamless. That's just all, but not controversial. But seamless. So, that's how it ended up. And I'm sorry you got in the middle, because it is. Being the guy in the middle isn't fun. It's, it's tough. And I've seen that in lots of other places. And so there, that, that was, that's where we were. And it's unfortunate that that's how it ended up.
So, Laura, can I ask, answer a question? Did you take Eric with you into these negotiations?
Nope.
So, I was looking through, and I, I have an email that you sent me on March second, in which you, of this year, in which you told me, and apparently a couple other council members, where you found that you didn't have emails of everybody. So, in that, you, you said that you would be negotiating a contract, and that you would be taking our, or at least with the advice of our attorney. And my understanding is, he didn't even know that we were having that July fourteenth meeting, and Jimmy came down and talked to us. So, I, and then, when we had discussions after the first gentleman came and introduced the union to us, there was a discussion, Eric was here, and that was a paper. And we talked about that afterwards, and Eric made it very clear that the council has the negotiating, holds the negotiating power. And he said, unless we delegate it. And it was, I, it was very clear that night, I went through the notes, there was really no details put in there, but we didn't, we didn't vote for you to, to delegate the power. But what I was under the assumption was, is that you would go on a fact-finding mission. I asked if a council member could go. A couple people felt like it was, they were comfortable with you, and, and I believe, I don't know who said you, and Eric would go with you and be involved with you in that. So.
What was this, that, from the mission?
Well, that was after the first, that you would go talk to the union and bring back to the council information. So, what, what I find me, the lawyer that I talked to, and you and Pete, and he has talked to us, a little bit problematic for us, is that even if we had sent you, if, if we had agreed to send you as a delegate for us, and, you know, all the others, we didn't really understand what options we had until we talked to MRSC, and they suggested from the get-go, we should have hired a negotiator, since we don't have a PR person or HR, I'm sorry, those, those things available to us. So, what was problematic was that you didn't come to us for any parameters, parameters of what we work, you know, what, what is the highest. So, so what was presented to us is a contract, not, not just a proposal. So, you know, that, that pushes us pretty fast into a possible impasse, because our union members are, you know, they're, this is representing on their side. And so, so I, I just feel unfortunate. It'd be nice if it was five thousand dollars. I mean, even Eric's retainers, two hundred dollars an hour. So, you know, we, we've asked him multiple times if he was comfortable walking through this with us, and he really isn't. He said that he has experience with employment law, but he, and, and Pete, prior to our last council meeting, had told him that, you know, we, we felt like maybe we needed to get, before we voted on it at the last meeting, you know, but I think Eric came to this last meeting expecting that we were gonna get an negotiator to see, and said, you know, at this point, that might be the best thing for you guys to do. So, that's kinda how we got here. And I wish, I wish it could cost five thousand dollars, I just don't think that's gonna work.
I wish it was, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and I, and I just would like to add, my last thought on this, is that this isn't, you said you're doing this out of appreciation, you know, for our employees. And I wish it hadn't gotten to be the fact that we're trying to exercise caution. What can we afford? And it, it shouldn't be, and I hope it's not being translated as not appreciation. It's just that I, as for one, as I've said many times, I look at the whole financial landscape in front of us. What can we afford? What can we sustain? As we were urged at our last meeting, you know, a lot of towns have gone bankrupt. And so, it, it is important that we look at this carefully, so.
So, in, in you guys' meeting that you had after our last meeting, where you guys were gonna talk about this, okay? What was your conclusion? Do we have enough finances to cover this?
Well, it would save us in the first place, the first one, the retroactive pay. That first year of.
Sure, we're really not ready to answer that. Oh, okay.
I, I just wanted to know if you, you.
That's, that's why we're bringing in a negotiator. I, that's why we're bringing in a negotiator. I'm just really not sure. I mean, it helps to look at, we, when we first were giving it, we'd be more clear on what the insurance costs. Now, we kinda have that. And then, really looking at the ramifications. And then also, I've been doing more research on the like towns. So, so at this point, we just, I don't have, I don't think we have any answers to that question.
No, I mean, after. You know, after the meeting last night and before you guys met, I had it in my, my mind, and I was wondering, do you guys want somebody to negotiate for you? Or do you want somebody to go through the books and the proposals to find out if this is doable or not? There's, there's two different, in my view, there's two different things.
Well, the union said they're going to go through the books, not, not the negotiator.
Well, the union already, I mean, already, already has. And they know, they would not be asking if this wasn't a feasible number. And they wouldn't be, I mean, if we were on the verge of, of bankruptcy, they wouldn't be after us like this. They, they, we've gotten healthier for the last three years. So that's, I, 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 that's what I was wondering, if, if you guys had gone in and went, is this sustainable? Is, and that, that's critical at all levels. Anytime you make a decision, you have to ask yourself, is this decision sustainable? And in a sense it is because at some point, there is always going to have to be some paying increases to the employees at some level. And at this point, what this does is it controls this. This is one of the things that is controllable, that we know that is a norm factor. If, if we were to say, to accept the proposal as it is now, the contract as it is now, we at least know going forward for the next three years, what the city's going to be at risk for or have to pay.
And I think that's where the negotiators really don't come in because there's other people don't see it that way. They, they, and they have different views. And I think this is where the debate is going to come out, because there's going to be give, take, give and take. And I think that's where we're at now. I, I think that we need to look at those things, discuss them. And if some's short here and long here, whatever, it, it needs to be out because some people feel the opposite of you at some moment.
Okay, I swear, I can understand it. So this, ma'am, I'll refer to you. Does, does a third come out of water sewer and general operating? Or how does this money come out?
Water sewer streets and general.
Okay. So they have these.
It's, it's not perfectly split, it's had your.
Whatever the, whatever the, whatever the numbers are. Okay. All right. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. And the motion, if I remember right, is to accept Mr. Menke from the, Menke Jackson and Byer offer. And that's, and then we've got another motion we need to correct, we need to have, right? All right. We're going to go around P, when you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Present.
Yes. No. Okay, so with that, yes, 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 no, present.
Yes.
Motion passes five to one, one present. Okay, do I have another motion?
Motion that we approve up to $10,000 at this point. With the ability to adjust if necessary, a, a budget.
Okay. Do you allow this to be accepted? All right, let's start the other way, go around.
Question?
Okay, I'm sorry, any more discussion?
Up to $10,000, what if it goes over $10,000?
Well, it's set with the ability to adjust if necessary.
Uh, okay.
But you're going to come back to the council again?
Yeah, we've got to come back and get further approval. And with an idea of how much over.
Any more discussion?
So that, that means, Mike, that I think we would fight really hard to keep it up at $10,000.
I'm just curious, would, will I make sure it's there, you know, the right way?
Well, I think, you know, Sherri, Sherri, you touched on it earlier. You said, you know, that a lack of contentiousness from here on out will determine how much time to get involved.
Sure. It could do less.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? Who's going to, who's going to give them papers to determine to, you know, say this is what we want?
Well, they'll meet with all of them.
All of them.
So they'll have a meeting, and we, we have what we already have discussed, you know, for them to consider. And then they'll meet with all of us through, you know, to be able to.
Zoom?
He's, he's logged over here.
We'll get you in a room, we'll get you on Zoom. Now, we, we could, would all come in a room, all of it be on Zoom with us in a meeting like this, which we can do, the, we can do outside of, of public acts. We can, negotiations can happen in a closed meeting.
All right. Any more discussion? Here's the motion. Approved?
Yes.
No?
Yes. No?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes one to two. All right? Kind of account, right? All right. So we're going to hire Mr. Menke, and it's limited at $10,000. Hopefully this does. Okay? Anything else at this point, guys?
Well, we had, the second was scheduled in town hall meeting. And I, I just don't know, to the rest of the council, we, we were hoping to have one prior to this. I, I, you know, I don't know if we want to have one further down the road. I was looking, Monday, August 11th is a possibility if we did that. I know people want to voice thoughts and opinions. I don't know if there's a lot that we as a council, once we start with meeting with, with Mr. Menke, until we are close this all up, I don't know if a lot that we can say or answer questions about. But if they, I think a lot of people in the community have questions about, you know, how we got here. There's also people who have questions about the sewer system and concerns and thoughts. We thought we were going to be giving an update, we thought we might have some more conclusive, other than the fact that I believe they said that January, we have to have a plan in place, right? So, so I, I don't know if, if it, you know, I, I don't know if it's, if, I mean, anybody can call a town meeting. I do think if we have it on these topics, that we all should be there. And maybe we could find somebody kind of neutral to.
And, and I don't, I'm not going to advise you because I'm not supposed to. But I, at this point, I would, I would figure out, you guys get together with your, your advisor, whatever you're going to call those, your attorney, and, and ask him. Give a turn to him that he thinks is a, is a viable way to go.
That's probably good advice, I think. When you're in, once you start negotiations, that's on trial. None of the, none of the details go public. It protects, I mean, it protects both sides. And then when the final contract is done, agreed to, then that goes public. Let every detail, you know, not every detail, and, and everybody moves forward. Because in the end, you have problems together. And I've seen it. In the end, that's how it works. But we'll see. So, yeah, I, that's a good question.
Okay.
Taking that.
Put it short, yeah.
Got you. At this point, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mike.
Motion seconded. Hold on, any discussion? Charles, you have a stand?
I have.
Post. Thank you.